United States of America. In the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Motion accepted agenda with flexibility.
Second.
Motion is second to accept agenda with flexibility. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Kurt, what we got?
Okay, couple items. All right, Kathy's just giving me the joint ordinance for approving your new capital improvement plan. This is for LIT, which we of course know as local income tax, used to be referred to as ceded or edit. And so those projects are listed on exhibit A. The county council has approved all of them at their last meeting. It is a joint ordinance. This is the original. So if you have questions, I don't have state to ask, but we need to do this before the end of the year. So that you can continue to receive your $2,755,137 in estimated revenue. Please.
This is one of the things that might change next year.
Will probably change, yes. Right.
And we have to start thinking about it.
Correct.
Yeah, that's your, I mean, that's a number that's gonna probably completely differ if they don't do something different with this central one issue. But for now, that's our estimated amount.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the joint ordinance 2025-11-17A. Repealing and restating the capital improvement plan for the county.
Second. We have a motion is second to approve the joint ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Is there a second reading on this one or not?
Probably motion to waive second reading.
Second. The motion is second to waive second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And unless you tell me not to, Terry, I was gonna jump all the way down to the plan department and deal with that.
That's fine.
I don't believe Robbie or Chris is here. I'm just looking to make sure they'd like me to cover that for them, right?
That's fine.
They've had some absence issues and health related matters. So what we have before you is the MAP amendment ordinance. And bear with me, since I wasn't at this hearing, I'm gonna try to do my best to cover for them. My recollection is that this deals with some property in Shipshewana that has been zoned industrial. That has.
Apartments.
Thank you. And they wanna rezone it to B2. And we've reviewed the original resolution from the plan commission granting favorable recommendation. I have that here. And so the plan commission has had their public hearing, published their notice, done all the things they need to do to give it a positive recommendation. And so now we have an ordinance, which is the document on top. The rest are exhibits. It would go along approving the proposal to change that zoning from I2 to B2.
Yeah, this has been an issue over there with the town when it comes to rates and that because they're all business. And they shouldn't be business. They should be residential because it's, they got apartments and houses and that.
Town should have fixed this a long time ago.
It's not us. It's not the town. It's the individual owns it, trying to get them to do it.
Gotta get a knife jab in there somehow. All right, well, I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance number 2025-11-17B. Mending the maps of unified development ordinance in town of Shipshewana.
Second.
Sorry.
The motion is second, I'm gonna abstain from voting on this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that one does not require a second reading, so it's already had its public hearing. So that is all we have on that. And I don't have anything further unless you have something for me.
Do you have anything else for Kurt? Kaye Trails Project land purchase.
Oh, I guess that probably is you.
That is you, I think, isn't it?
Sorry about that. I was thinking Kathy might, and we can do it together. But the closing is tentatively scheduled for November 26th. And there remains to be one major issue, and we're hopeful that that issue gets resolved. But as of this morning, it hasn't yet been either way. Because at some point, it will get resolved, we hope, and we'll have a closing. But the plan right now, tentative schedule is at the title company and railroad and the trails group folks have agreed on November 26th. So what I'd like you to consider, Kathy, I don't believe I have the exact numbers, but it's whatever remains in the account at the time, currently balance available is $1,067,772.70. We'd like to have authority to have up to that amount of money wired to the title company for the closing to acquire the property from the railroad. Presumably on, on or before the 26th of November, or sometime later thereafter, once the parties have agreed upon the issues that remain. So really looking for a motion to authorize the wire and approve the auditor's office making that.
I agree with it.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve transferring of $1,670,000, $67,772.70 to be wired to the title company?
Up to.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the transfer. The stated, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, maintenance department. Gary?
Good morning. The last couple of years here at the annex building, I've been trying to standardize all the old shades and blinds here in the annex building. The top floor is finished. I'm working on the main floor here. I've got the west side all done, and I've got the recorders to do yet, and the treasures office, and the old HR room back here. So I got ahold of Fort Wood Shades. They've been, they're the ones that've been doing my shades here for the last couple of years. And so I've got eight of them I want to replace for a total of 2,000, I'm sorry, $2,825. That's what I do. And I do have money in my fund. I'd like to get that done yet this year.
I make a motion to approve the quote with four wins shades for 2025.
Second. We have motion is second to approve the quote for shade replacement by maintenance department. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Building department. Were we missing, were that one taken off?
We're jumping on.
We're jumping that one? All right. That's good. I didn't want to listen to this morning anyway. Sheriff?
I start saying Christmas carols.
He'll start talking about Christmas, wanting to decorate, and he's already decorated.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just the only thing I have this morning is I'd like to get permission to move forward with our 2026 vehicle purchases. Did get three quotes. Angola Dodge came in at 42,93480. John Jones was 42,75150. And the Fletcher's that we've been dealing with the last several years was still the lowest at 41,470. And this will be the 2026 Dodge Durango, same thing that we're utilizing now.
Three of them?
Four this year. For next year. And then if we'd like to get permission to get those ordered, also the equipment, because actually equipment's been taking longer to get in than the vehicles do. So nothing will come in until after January and wait for, it would be a 26 budget. I brought them with me.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
He's getting it figured out.
And I'm trained.
Okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion with share permission of order the four vehicles, $41,470 each.
Second.
The motion is second to let the sheriff order the four vehicles for the sheriff's office. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
And then as far as the equipment, we're okay to just get, at least get it ordered. It'll be after.
I'm just making another motion.
I'll make a motion that they go ahead and place the order for the vehicles.
For the equipment.
Or for the, I'm sorry, for the equipment, for the vehicles.
Second. The motion is second to approve the order of the equipment for the vehicles. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep. Let's see. Highway, Aaron?
Good morning. I'm gonna ask for two separate motions for material bids. First one, just to ask that we accept everything that we received by 9:00 AM as advertised. If you guys could accept that, that would be great.
From last, last meeting, correct?
Uh, yep, from two, two meetings ago.
October 20th.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to accept the bids we received by 9:00 AM on October 20th, 2025, highway department.
Second. We have motion is second to accept the bids we received by 9:00 AM on October 20th for material bids. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Uh, second item for material bids is we did have one vendor that came in past the due date. That was a levy company for item 7A slag material. I'm gonna ask that we reject that because they, it was late. So I asked that we reject that, please.
So I'll make a motion to reject the bid for 7A slag material.
Second. We have motion is second to reject the bid for 7A slag material that came in on October 20th late. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
That was short. Nothing else?
I'll be back.
Okay, IT department, purchase approvals.
Good morning.
Morning.
So we need approval for paying Spyglass for $74,839.02 for the services they rendered. For going through everything with bright speed and what we can shut off and what we don't need.
I think he said he had that in his budget.
Yeah, he did.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment to Spyglass. I don't know the exact, $74,000 something.
Seventy-two, wasn't it?
$74,839.02.
Yes, that number.
Second. We have motion is second to pay Spyglass for the work they did for La Grange County IT department. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
And then we have a quote for three servers that needed ordered. The total coming out to $7,599.47. It's to replace some servers, I believe, at the sheriff's department.
I think allow IT to order three servers for sheriff's department, $7,599.47.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second to allow IT to purchase three servers for the sheriff's office. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries.
And then we have 18 computers we need to order to replace some computers that are aging behind. The total for that is $12,751.38.
And this is, this would be part of the refresh, I'm assuming?
Yes, this is for refreshing computers. This is for highway and health department.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the refresh of the computers for 12, 18 of them, correct?
Yes, 18.
Eighteen computers for $12,751.38.
Second. The motion is second to approve the purchase of 18 computers for the highway department, health department. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thanks. Health department.
Morning.
Good morning. We're off.
As the health department is requesting your approval to apply for a grant to the Indiana Department of Health. And that's related to the bear flu outbreak that is running right now.
Problem with it? I don't think we have much of an option. We've got a problem out there.
Motion, motion to approve the health department to apply for a grant in the department of health.
How much is this?
Is a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
We have motion is second to approve the grant request for the health department. You have the president sign. All those favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. I thought I put this, you guys didn't.
I didn't hear that.
Thank you.
I'm glad you put that in there.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay. Public defender, purchase of equipment or office furniture.
We got a couple requests. First off, we've been finishing the new office space, so obviously we're trying to get a feel. We got the desk space for the workspaces first in order to get functional. And now we're kind of getting a feel for the use of the space and then getting a feel for what we're gonna need to fill out the rest of it so we can use it into the next year. The request that the quote I got from Kendrick is the same. People that got the other furniture, we're trying to keep it, the look consistent through the building. Plus it's really durable furniture, so we don't expect to buy anymore for a long time. The conference room table in particular is a modular type design, so when we put it together, it makes a nice conference room table. But we can split it apart for training purposes and put attorneys behind each row of the table to watch the video for video training or for live training in the conference room space. So it gives us some versatility with that space and makes that room more of a multifunctional instead of just a standard conference room. Quotes came in, you know, Kendrick is, does a good job with those, and I do have money in my budget. I was anticipating doing this next year, but because of one of our defenders that left a little early, we had some money we weren't anticipating that's still left in our budget from that contract that we're not gonna fill until the first of the year with a new attorney. So we wanted to go ahead and get the jump on that purchase this year. Same goes for the second request. Originally, I was looking at doing TV on the wall with video conferencing capabilities and then having a whiteboard on another wall for, you know, for training and strategizing purposes. After talking with Mark, the idea, I think the health department has one of these, has one of those smart boards that kind of does it all. And then, and you can have it on wheels so we can move it around and use it in other ways. So I submitted just basically an Amazon quote of, of a smart board that, you know, was available generally on Amazon. That's not counting the preferential pricing we may get through our new Amazon account situation. And also I'd be coordinating with Mark to make sure the specs and everything were set to where, you know, IT was on board with exactly what we were buying. So this was just to give you an idea of the price. So we're just looking at for authorization for up to $5,000 on the smart board. And then we want to authorize the quote price of $35,880 for the furniture items for the conference room and the, and the waiting area in the PD office.
Do you have money in your budget for both those items?
We do have money in this year's budget, and then we're, we're working with council on, you know, we had some money set aside next year. So we're still just talking with council to get a transfer done. So the transfer has not been made yet, but the money's there. We just need to move it to the line item for equipment.
Any questions, Ken? I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the
Purchases?
Purchases of the furniture and equipment. Pending council approval of the transfer.
Second. We have motion is second to approve the two purchases of, one for office furniture, one for a smart board. Once the transfer funds has been completed, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Thanks. Okay. Andrew Foster. You out there?
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Well, my name is Andy Foster with Inspiration Ministries. I'm the president. And with me this morning here in attendance is my vice president, board chair Don Harvey. Councilwoman from the city of Kendaville, Tara Strebe. John and Alicia Drum, who are volunteers with the ministry here at the La Grange County Jail. And Chris Short beside them, who's the director of our men's recovery program. And I believe our pastor from Bright Point Chapel is here. I sent you guys some information. I appreciate you taking the time to get us on the calendar for today. The timeframe is a little tight for some of these things, but it's not unfamiliar with, you know, community development block grants. The short is with Inspiration Ministries, we've been very fortunate over the last 10 years to develop a pretty comprehensive and effective recovery program. What started in DeKalb County with a couple homes for men, expanded into serving women and postgraduate folks. In 2021, we launched into Kendaville, and we saw great results. And over the last few years, we've obtained some properties, and we've just, we've been blessed and it's been great. We have a very qualified staff. We have kind of every credential that you can have when it comes to recovery programs. We're fortunate to be able to say that because it's a lot of work to meet national and evidence-based standards to do this work. Something unique that happened was in 2021, I believe, Oprah launched a community development block grant for recovery housing. It was HUD money, really the first time, probably in several decades, maybe if ever, that they launched this grant. And they were giving away awards of $600,000. We, we knew that we would be competitive because the standards that you have maybe read in the grants already, there's really a short list of organizations in the state of Indiana that can actually achieve the standards that are within these grants, and we happen to be one of them. We are very fortunate at the end of 2021 to get a call from the lieutenant governor to say that we were one of two recipients of that award. And in 2022, we built two stick-built homes in the city of Butler to house 10 men in recovery. And it was great, and it, and it still exists, and it's, it's, it's really been great. And then in 2023, they launched a second round, a $750,000 award. And they gave away four of those awards. And again, we partnered with the city of Kendaville to do that. And we were one of four recipients in that award. And we consider ourselves fortunate that, you know, these, the timeframes are very short. So it's, even though we have dialogue going on with the municipalities at the time, when they launched the grant, it's like, hey, you have six weeks to get this very comprehensive, long grant around, you know, to be competitive. And we've been fortunate because I think as we've kind of had vision for impacting local communities, some of these conversations are already happening. And we try to be prepared for, and I kind of, I knew this third round was probably gonna launch. I didn't know if it was gonna be this year or the beginning of next, and so it was on my radar. And conversations were already happening here in La Grange County. And so in Kendaville, we owned a commercial building where we did a lot of activity on the first floor, but it had a third floor and a, excuse me, a second and a third floor. About 4,000 square feet. And so we applied for the $750,000, and we received that grant. And we are right now remodeling that property. They're shooting towards the end of January here to actually house another 13 men that are in recovery. And so it's really been great. And so the third round was just announced literally last week. I think it was Tuesday morning. And with conversations that we already having in La Grange, we thought this was a unique opportunity. And we're here today specifically to ask for La Grange County to partner with Inspiration Ministries to apply for this grant. And then if approved by the county, and then if we were awarded to execute this grant together. We are fully aware that we, as Inspiration Ministries, can't execute this kind of grant without the municipality or the government partner. In these situations, La Grange County would be the pass-through. You would be the recipient of the grant. And Inspiration Ministries would be the sub-recipient. No, no dollars go in or really come out from the county. The state pays the expenses directly to the contractor and then are matching funds if the project exceeds the amount of the grant, which is $750,000. We, we pay that to the city, to the county, and that, then that goes out. It's a really unique opportunity. I have personally, and our organization has been a part of conversations in La Grange County for almost four years, five years. When it comes to just recovery housing, currently there's really nothing that exists. I couldn't really say for sure, but I don't know if anything has ever existed. And we do see this as a really incredible opportunity to produce La Grange County's first recovery residence for men. And the reason I say recovery residence is because one thing that we want to make clear is that we don't, we don't develop like transition homes or halfway homes. These are state certified recovery residences, certified by the Division of Mental Health and Addiction. We are a state certified addiction services provider. We have clinicians. We have certified peers that execute the services that we provide. And so we consider ourselves fortunate that this grant was launched at this time. $750,000 is a lot, a lot of money. We do have a blueprint that we've used before that we've executed in Butler. We'd have to update it, and we may tweak it a bit, but the idea of being able to build something for between $500,000 and $600,000 is very real, maybe a 28 to 3,500 square foot home. There is money for acquisition. You may have a question today, say where, and my response to that will be, to be determined. Oftentimes, we, we like to operate a little outside of the town, and so hence La Grange County. We're, we, we have some stakeholders that own property locally. We are also aware that the county does own property that just exists. And though we're not necessarily here to make that ask today, we, we're just aware of that. But with your approval to partner with us, what will happen after this is that we have four weeks to put together the application. Quite frankly, 95%, again with your approval, 95% of that grant will come together pretty seamlessly. We already have all the, really the narrative of who we are and what we do. But we'll, we'll be looking to secure land in whatever way that looks like. Maybe it means that we come back before the commissioners or the council here in the next month. But we will, with your approval, it will give us the ability to start navigating, working with region 3A to start putting the grant together. They, they have to put the grant together. They're state certified grant administrators, so we will partner with them. But again, it's, it's really a unique opportunity. This opportunity, could they do, launch a round four? Maybe. Could they never do a recovery housing pilot program again? Maybe. And so we would love to partner with La Grange County to see this happen. There's some really passionate people in this community that are on board that want to volunteer that. We had a small fundraiser at Bright Point Chapel just a few weeks ago, but not knowing this grant was gonna come around, not knowing where, and we raised $35,000 in one night. Just from people that are interested in seeing services be available to serve men that are in recovery, reentry, coming out of our, our jail system. And our hope and our track record has shown that our desire is for people to get out of the system, but it's to keep them out of the system. And we've been very fortunate to have a couple hundred graduates over the last five years. In less than 10%, we have seen reengage in the criminal justice system. Not only has it saved the municipality of hundreds of thousands of dollars to not reincarcerate people, but we've just seen lives transformed. We've seen businesses benefit from eager, people that are looking for employment. And we've just seen communities enhance. So our hope is today is to, to make the ask and to obviously answer any questions. And we have advocates that are willing to share as time allows and as you would permit. But our hope is that specifically today is for the La Grange County commissioners to approve partnership with Inspiration Ministries. For us to start heading towards putting a grant application for Oprah's recovery housing program grant.
That's a lot. So obviously, there is a need for this in La Grange County. Not the answer I want to hear. So the cost after you build this, who, where's all that money come from?
Great question. So Inspiration Ministries will be the owner and the operator of the house. What we have foreseen is that the budget to operate this house will be about $250,000 a year. That's pretty typical for us. That'll, that'll involve about four to five full-time staff, and then just the operations of the house in general. It's nice not having a mortgage. And then just the operations of the house in general. It's nice not having a mortgage on a thing like this. So that's, that's the money that we don't have to have. Typically, our sustainability for operations is one, we're a nonprofit that's a fundraising nonprofit. We write a lot of grants. About one-third of our money comes from grant writing. We probably have another quarter to a third that comes from just donations from people. We work very hard on on building relationships with folks, churches that give annually to Inspiration Ministries. And also because we're a certified addiction services provider, we, we're also a Medicaid provider. And and then we also connect with the Division of Mental Health and Addiction. And so even though I know the the news and there's a lot of questions about Medicaid and things like that, the things that are happening with Medicaid don't typically hit, wouldn't necessarily impact us at a high level because the folks that we serve are kind of on the most vulnerable scale. And we're not, Medicaid doesn't necessarily sustain us. It's more, we provide services like assessments and drug screens and peer support and individual counseling to folks when they first come in. And so between those three buckets, not that there's not other buckets that are involved in what we do, that should be more than enough to sustain our operations on a daily basis. Other things that we've done is we have supported employment relationships with businesses. It's not uncommon for us to partner with local businesses. I'll give you an example, a local organization in in Butler, they, they produce thermally modified lumber. And they may say, hey, we've got a, we want to contract Inspiration Ministries to to build a thing, right? We need a bunch of holes screwed in. We're putting this deck assembly to send to Oregon. It's not uncommon for us to have contract. We have a lot of manpower, as you can imagine. You got fifteen, sixteen guys on a, on a campus. It's not uncommon for us to have a pallet full of lumber, put that together, and that contract may be a few thousand bucks. And we see that and that kind of keeps, you know, the grease on the wheels as it keeps going. We have been around for almost fifteen years and we've been housing people for ten. And I don't say it lightly, but we've been incredibly fortunate to develop a strategy that has been very sustainable over these last several years. So so those are some of the things that we would like to continue to do here in La Grange County.
Do you have somebody who stays at the house?
We do. Yeah.
Forty-seven.
It is. Our, our homes are certified as a Level Four recovery residence. And as a part of that, not only does it require, but we do, we have twenty-four hour supervision. Somebody lives there at all times and manages it. It's not uncommon for our operational structure, as I mentioned, Chris Short here, Chris, say hi. He's the director of our, our men's program overall in several of our counties. And so Chris is at one level every day, touching base. We have an intake coordinator that does the interviewing, that's making the decision on who comes into our house, which is important to us because it is, it is a group home living setting. So we don't just open the door as wide as it can, you know, as we can, and they just funnel in. We, we interview people and we want people to be willing to receive help, which keeps a good culture in our homes. But then the live-in are our house managers. Those are twenty-four hour. Oftentimes, we have an assistant house manager. We have a full-time case manager that are working with the men every single day. And case management is exactly how it sounds. Their situations are very complex. They may be in the system for breaking the law. They may be in the system for drugs and alcohol, but the reality is the complexity of their story runs decades deep from destroyed relationships to, most of them don't have a driver's license. You know, some, a lot of them have not held down, held down jobs for years. And we work with them every step of the way so that when they complete our program, they are ready to enter back into the community. Oftentimes, we have a transportation specialist. I mean, maybe it's a fancy word for somebody that drives them around every day, all the time, because there's lots of work and probation and things that are happening every day. But that's often a certified peer specialist. It's a certified person by the state. And so that's, that's happening every single day. So a lot of coverage all day, safety, productivity, that is our mantra every day, safety, productivity. That's how we operate.
These questions I'm asking is because if you get put in the neighborhood somewhere, people living around there are going to wonder what kind of house we have there. So
A hundred percent.
You know, what's your involvement with the local police department, sheriff's office? Do you get called, they get called to your place a lot or any issues or?
Rarely, rarely. I would, I, I'd be exaggerating. You say it's never happened, but it rarely has. Working in recovery is highly, highly, highly stigmatized. And we're well aware, there are service providers that ambulance calls and sheriff calls are not uncommon. Again, I am incredibly fortunate to be able to say that that is not the case with us.
Because we'll get those questions too, if we partner with you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm just trying to cover all the bases.
Absolutely. And our commitment to this county and to our commissioners and to our council and to our sheriff's department is that we are present and we are willing and we are ready. That's why Councilwoman, Councilwoman Tara Strebe is here. Mayor Lance Waters sends his regards from Kendaville. He can't be here this morning. But we have seen a brilliant relationship working with our government agencies. And it is our commitment. Our commitment, our commitment is not to be far off. I live in Auburn with my wife and four kids. Don lives ten minutes south of here. We want to be present. We want it to be successful. We see these operations absolutely transform the community. And so we're here. We're here for the long haul and we want to help.
Sir, what you said, I take it the people there want to be there.
A hundred percent. That's correct. That's correct. Though we have a good professional relationship with criminal justice providers, we're not necessarily the court-ordered program. We're the program that an individual can be court-ordered to a program. Now, La Grange doesn't have one. So we actually serve some of your La Grange County folks now. But, you know, if they're ordered to a program, that's fine, but we're still going to go through our interview process. We want to be able to sit down and we want to hear the story, but we want to hear the underlying desire for help. And a lot of our folks are peer professionals. And what that means is that they have lived experience. And so they've been there, they've seen it, they understand it. And it's not like we don't get fooled at times. But the reality is our intake people, Chris, they do a great job of bringing in folks that are really, are willing and wanting to see change in their life. And once they make that decision and they come in, you know, to our houses, we're a hundred percent for their success.
Have you turned people down before?
We have. We have. When we start to understand that people are potentially trying to use the program as a bit of a diversionary tactic, hey, I want to get less time, so I want to come here. That's not really how we operate. And so we, we, we do turn down people for that. And there's just other circumstances, you know? Again, we want them to be willing and ready. We've had parents, parents call us. Hey, my son really needs to be here. I filled out his application for him. We just really need your son to give us a call so that we know that he wants to. And sometimes we don't hear from that, that son or daughter or nephew or grandparent. So we do, we do. We, it is not really our heart to turn people down. And the reality is, guys, you know, this house, say we build a three thousand square foot by every legal standard, maybe we put sixteen, eighteen guys in it. It is not the end-all, be-all. It is not. The statistics, the statistics say right now, the state would say that one percent of our population would benefit from recovery housing, one percent. And so take our population here in La Grange County.
Forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand. Ten percent is forty-two, one percent is four hundred and twenty beds. That's what the state would say this county would benefit from. Now, I don't even know if that's true. I mean, four hundred and twenty is a lot. You can cut it in half. Call it two-ten. Cut it in half. Call it one-oh-five. Cut it in half. Call it fifty-two and a half. There's zero right now. So we understand that the house that we're going to put together, and the, and the reality is, is that if we have this house and we could put on four, five, six acres, would a couple of years down the road, would it be great to maybe build a second house and have a campus and maybe call it forty? It would be. And do we think that would make a real dent? Absolutely. Would it fill the end-all, be-all need that La Grange County needs for treatment recovery? Probably not. But we're willing to be a solution at this time for a particular grant, that what we do know is that there is no other organization in northeast Indiana that can accomplish this grant. And so we're hoping that that's an advantage, at least at the right time right now.
You don't have a spot picked out yet?
I do not have a spot picked out. I've done Beacon and I see some yellow squares on there that seem advantageous. Some of them are owned by the County Commissioners of La Grange County that I've seen.
Well, don't look at the farmland down by Oliver Lake.
Okay. Well, we're usually not in the lake. And to your point, Commissioner Martin, is we don't typically do this in town. That's not typically how we operate. We liked it to be out of sight of town. For, I'll give you an example. The jail is south of town. It has a tract of land kind of in the center and there's a horseshoe around it. You know, it's twenty-three acres. In a perfect world, up here on that north part, if we squared off six acres, which there's, there's money for this grant for acquisition. So, I mean, you could donate it, yes, and that would be great. But we can, we can acquire it. Like, there's room for acquisition with this grant. But the idea of the proximity to the jail, six acres, so the health department would let us do maybe a septic system or two? Would we view that as ideal? We would. Is there many neighbors? Well, the jail, I don't think they're going to mind because they're probably going to be thrilled, I hope, that they have a place as men are transitioning out, that they're driving about fifty yards and taking them to a safe place, that they can get help and they can get recovery. And so we see a piece of land like that and we say, man, that would be really cool. I can't sit here and say, I know the logistics of what that means. Our attorney would probably have a better idea of what that means. And, and I wasn't going to necessarily ask for that today because I didn't want to muddy the water of we obviously need your approval for partnership before we can do this grant. And the thought is, is that I would return. Obviously, we're open to ideas in a, in a short timeframe with a month. But those are the things that we've looked at. I know south of there, I saw that there's another eighty acres with the yellow square around it.
The farm.
Yeah.
County farm.
Yeah. The county farm. I mean, it looked like a farm.
There's a little more than that down there, but we, yeah.
Yeah.
We're restricted what we can do with that property too, on the deed and that, so.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We got this right here around, what he's talking about around the sheriff's office.
Yeah, it's, it's a horseshoe. And then on the north, it's kind of square, you know, and it goes all the way back. And so what we've, we've seen historically with some county properties, we can just draw that straight line all the way back to the, you know, just make that really easy. And then we would have to log and develop in the front. And again, that's going to be part of the grant. I mean, there's seven hundred fifty grand is no small drop in the bucket when it comes to this, to be able to log, to develop, to build, and to walk away with an operational piece of property. I mean, it's, quite frankly, it's a home run. And, and so when I look at that again, from a proximity to the jail, it's outside of town. Again, there's, you know, there's nobody, nobody, you know, there's no, there's no neighbors. I don't think literally at all. I, I, you know, when I looked at that, I thought that would be pretty cool. The offsets are there. We don't have to worry about frontage. And it would be a really a great piece of land to be able to navigate that. You know, from a commissioner's standpoint, I don't know what has to go to the council and what doesn't, which we're not opposed to go in the council and getting approvals for things. Again, it's just, time is of the essence and we're all a hundred percent.
This is on us.
Yeah. Is it? Okay.
Yeah, it's on us.
Well, bullet point number one is it's probably worth the conversation today. If, if that, if you see that as fruitful, it's probably worth having that conversation. It's really a pretty incredibly cool opportunity, really, so.
You've given a very excellent presentation, so I'll give you credit there, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can tell you're pretty passionate about this. So that's good. You're just not asking for money to get money, so I appreciate that.
That's correct.
I can tell you, I, I met Andrew probably two or three years ago. It's been a while. And we've had on and off conversations over that time period. And it never was the right time till now. And so it's been, it's been a long time in the process, I can tell you that. And so he's been, he's not any less passionate now than he was then. I can tell you that. The fire has not died on getting these guys. Yeah. It's a good chunk.
Yeah.
I don't know what that square is out to be. I don't know what that rectangle is.
I don't know what that rectangle will square out to be, but.
Eight point four-three-seven. I'm totally kidding.
And I do think, Alf, if I'm not mistaken, sewer runs through there, correct? Sewer.
Yeah.
And probably water too. Yeah, from the tunnel. So you probably wouldn't have to worry about your septic or, well, I mean, as far as you'd have.
Well, that's awesome.
Yeah. Because the jail's already got all those, so they go all the way down to the jail. So I mean, I, I guess for today, I would make a motion to approve Inspiration Ministries to go forward with the grant on behalf of the county.
I second that. I like it. Motion second to approve the grant application and signed by the president, right?
Yes, sir.
Form, right, Kathy? Still going to fill out that form?
No, that's a local grant. There'll be lots of things to sign.
Plenty of things to sign, for sure.
You probably want the president to sign it.
Yeah.
Motion a second to approve the grant application. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. There you go.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. No, we don't. What you need? What stuff?
On this.
Oh, he has it.
Oh, you want the three copies.
Okay. Finance report for October twenty twenty-five.
For the month ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, cash and deposits in the amount of fifty-five million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and three cents. Investments of nineteen million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and forty dollars.
Motion accept financial report.
Second.
We have a motion a second to accept the financial report. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Accounts payable.
Nothing else stated can be. Motion to approve accounts payable.
Second.
Motion second to approve accounts payable. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Minutes from November third. That's in October.
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Motion second to approve the minutes from November third. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion carries. Memorandum from regular meeting of November twelfth and executive on November twelfth.
Motion approve.
Second.
Good motion second to approve both memorandums. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. Guys, anything else?
I have nothing today. Motion adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, a motion to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. We're adjourned.